Hello, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the West Coast Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April 1st. To start the meeting, will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be aware that the meeting is being livestreamed on our YouTube channel and the meeting may be also audio or video recorded by the people present in the room. To start off our agenda this evening, we have one of our favorite activities, which is a swearing-in of a new police officer. So I'm going to hand it over to our Chief, Michael Cowell, to do the introduction.
Thank you. And once again, thank you to the board for allowing us to do this before your meeting or at the beginning of your meeting. We are hiring new officers, something we don't get to do very often, and something we take great pride in. The process that Brooke had to go through is not an easy one. There was plenty of testing during which she came out on top and not by a little bit. She let her, she set herself apart from all the others. But more importantly, Brooke, we knew when we spoke to her that she was going to fit in here just like a piece of the puzzle. So we're super happy to have her and appreciate her wanting to come to West Coast to the way she did. I also want to thank the Honorable Martin Gosh for coming and swearing her in. He's always available to us and we appreciate his help. Brooke comes to us from New Jersey, where she has an associate's degree from the Ocean County College and where she worked for the Rumsen Police Department for about five years. Fortunately, she had a change in life after meeting her husband, John, and they're moving to Pennsylvania, which was lucky for us. She began looking for a place to call home and fortunately she found it here with us. And I think for her family and friends that are here, if you look around and see all the officers that are here today, that are here in their own time to come out to support and welcome Brooke says a lot about our department and the type of place she's moving into. So I hope you're happy about it. And without further ado, I'll ask Brooke to come forward with your family. John and Mr. and Mrs. Hospital, do you want to come up? I'm going to turn it over to the Honorable Joe.
Good evening. If you want to press your left hand and give your name please. I, Brooke O'Brien.
I, Brooke O'Brien.
You solemnly swear with pride.
You solemnly swear with pride.
As I uphold the laws and the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the laws and the Constitution of the United States.
The laws and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws and the ordinances of West Coast Township.
The law of ordinance of West Coast Township.
I further acknowledge.
I further acknowledge.
That I will hold and enforce.
That I will hold and enforce.
The law without consideration.
The law without consideration.
Of a person's.
Of a person's.
Here we go. Race.
Race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Condition.
Condition.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Now I'm going to turn the microphone over to our Board Chairperson, Sean, for...
Brooke, if you would like to stay over here, we could talk to you directly. So, good evening, Officer O'Brien. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I want to extend a warm welcome to you today as you are sworn in as the newest member of the West Coast Police Department. Thank you both for your original decision to make a career in law enforcement and in accepting our offer to join the West Coast Police. The Board of Supervisors continues to be very proud of the history and the performance of our police department, the officers and command staff's dedication to their duties, and their commitment to the service of residents and the wider Westchester area public is second to none. The reputation of the department is exceptional and the team is highly respected within the law enforcement and legal community for its professionalism. When issues arise, as they do in any organization, the team addresses them in a responsible manner to ensure the best outcome for the department and our community. We always encourage a learning and continuous improvement culture because that is a critical piece of how we maintain the department's reputation for excellence in policing. Even though you're still at the early stage of your career, don't hesitate to share your observations and ideas with your fellow officers and command staff on how something could be improved. We value what you bring as a new addition to the team. I am confident you will serve your community with pride, protecting the public from those who cause harm and caring for those who need help, treating them in the same way you would one of your own family. My best wishes for a successful career in law enforcement in the years ahead. Congratulations on becoming a West Coast Police Officer. Very good. If you want to take some pictures here, that'd be fine.
Or exit.
If you want to do it in front of here or in the back, either way.
I think we'll do it out in the hallway and let you go.
Okay, we'll take a minute till I got to fix it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is number four, the opportunity for public comments. So if there's anybody here who has a question or a comment they would like to make about anything that is not on the topic this evening, now's the time to do it. Margie?
Good evening, Margie Swer. At the board meeting held on March 18th, Chairman Walsh announced that the board met an executive session before that meeting to discuss, quote, "legal matters associated with the Greystone dedication of open space." Throughout the years, I've asked many questions, voiced concerns, and even predicted potential lawsuits regarding the Greystone development. It's impossible to remember meeting dates and precisely what my questions and comments were, but I wanted to refresh my memory, so I read through meeting minutes and then compared them to what was said in real time by watching the corresponding YouTube video of that meeting. It must be noted, since the fall in 2021, since the fall hiring 2021, of our Township Manager, Mr. Basior, the meeting minutes have been outstanding. His thoroughness and accuracy provide commendable transparency. Regarding the legal matters of Greystone, I want to bring your attention to the meeting minutes of October 19th, 2021. Chairman Walsh was absent, Ms. Gagne and Mr. Hellman were present, current members, Ms. Smith and Mr. Wallman were not yet on the board, so only two of the five current supervisors were present. At this meeting, Phase Three of the Greystone development was approved. Per meeting minutes, Township Engineer Rick Craig discussed modifications to some of the features that have been adjusted since the subdivision plan was originally approved. I was curious. Greystone residents might be curious, and now, three and a half years later, the board may even be curious or need a reminder just what modifications were made to the original approved plans. To find the answer I was seeking, I went to the Township official YouTube channel and learned those modifications included safety fences for the dams, the addition of safety ballards at the access points to some of the trails, and gates to the emergency access points. The meeting minutes also reminded me that, quote, "Mr. Hellman asked about the status of the outstanding items discussed with the board in May," which was May of 2021. In watching the meeting video on YouTube, I'm reminded that at that date and time, three and a half years ago, according to Mr. Hellman, there were what he thought was 22 punchless items on that list. So three and a half years later, it would be interesting to know how many are on that list now. Again, meeting minutes, outstanding, but because they're not required to be verbatim, oftentimes valuable information might never be readily available without the Township's YouTube channel, which continues the preservation of meeting minutes, of the meeting videos. Per the minutes, I'm almost through. Per the minutes, Mr. Grokowski outlined the status of the trail items. Per the video, he specified the status of nine bridges and the large dam. In my mind, my memory, I thought there were 18 bridges, so it was nice to go back in the video and learn that there's nine bridges. Mr. Caligretco, the attorney for the developer, referenced basin X again, not in the minutes, but in the video. Three and a half years later, it'd be interesting to know what the status of basin X is. And finally, but most importantly, the minutes read, quote, "Ms. Camp explained the escrow agreement process." But you have to watch the video to learn that, according to her, quote, "in West Coast, the board has delegated that authority to the township engineer to approve both the amount of the escrow and then also approves the release of the escrow." So I have one question tonight. Is the township able to provide me with a resolution or a code that precise, that absolves this board from their legal obligation to approve escrow amounts required and the approval of releases of escrow amounts?
What I said was that it's not documented in any formal resolution. That's the process the board has always deferred to the township engineer. The MPC requests the developer to submit, as the development is being approved, an opinion of probable cost, which is either based on an engineer's estimate or based on an actual contract that the developer's going to use to construct the improvements. And that amount is reviewed by the township, either the township engineer or sometimes you have a third-party engineer review it on behalf of the township. So the MPC is clear that that is something that the township engineer has a back-and-forth on. As far as the escrow releases, every municipality in Chester County does it differently. Some require you to come to a formal board meeting and there be a vote by the Board of Supervisors. I'd say the normal practice is that it is something that is handled administratively through the township staff and township engineer. And it doesn't happen until there's an inspection made of the improvements and there's confirmation that the improvements have been completed per the plan or per any other conditions that relate to those improvements. Township engineer recommends a release and then authorizes the release. So we have a land development agreement and a financial security agreement that are signed for every development and has been signed for every phase of Greystone. And we've been following that same process for this development and every process in West Coast since I've been here. So there is no formal written, there was no written board action to do that. That's something they've just recognizing that that's how the process has been, never questioned the procedure because they feel that it's done appropriately and rely upon an engineer to determine whether the improvements have been constructed or not. So it's not really, I mean, it's, the board would take whatever the engineer said as, I think they will, if they like their engineer, rely upon their engineer, have faith in what their engineer is doing, then that's the process and I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
Margie, is your concern the process of the engineer approving it or is it your concern about the amount of the escrows?
My concern, since I moved here and since my first meeting back in 2013, was that this is negotiated and determined, decided between the township engineer and the township's legal team or law firm.
Absolutely nothing to do with the escrow. I would have nothing to base an opinion on and I don't get involved one bit. So that is completely erroneous misstatement. That is not a fair statement.
Well...
And you should read the MPC about determining the amount of the opinion of probable cost because they are following that to the letter of the law.
Anna, I can tell you that in 17 years of doing this, the engineer has always reviewed and certified the escrow amount for every development I've ever been involved in.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll send an email that I have regarding the links and there was communication and the escrow amount was determined or agreed upon between the developer's attorney and at the time, our Mr. Ryan, I have the...
I think you're talking about a different escrow. I think he's, she's talking about the escrow that's needed to pay the inspection fees. That was something that I believe, and I wasn't the solicitor, but I believe that there's a separate agreement in place to have money on hand for the township to pay the consult and review fees. There was an escrow that was negotiated because that's not something that's contemplated by the MPC. The MPC does say the township can be reimbursed for the consultant review fees of the inspections. But as far as asking the developer to put money into the township, so we actually have the money here to pay those bills, that was a negotiation and there was a separate agreement to do that. That is, that's a different matter than the cost or the escrow to secure the completion of the improvements. They're two different things.
All right, but again, I don't know what the legal issues were, but if they entail anything regarding escrow amounts or anything like that, I would hope that instead of looking at ways to make our township less transparent, we focus on resolutions and ordinances that make sure our neighborhoods and developments are completed up to our plan.
The executive session was not discussing the escrow amounts or release of escrows. It was a different matter.
Okay. Even so, it's very important and I will send you that email between Mr. Ryan and for the link. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Charlie?
Charlie, go to West Coast. A quick one. The 2025 budget, I think, has electric vehicles to be purchased this year. Do we know and have we confirmed that we're buying electric vehicles for police patrol this year?
No, we're not buying police, AVs for police patrol duty this year. They're for administration detective use.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Sorry, David, I forgot your last name.
And I appreciate you and the audience allowing me to talk. I'm going to talk about autism real quick. Supervisor Smith and my son and I volunteer at the food cupboard on Friday. We end up in a conversation and she said she works here at, or is on the board here at West Coast and I have an interesting story at the end about experience of my son with the West Coast Police Department. My son, Michael, is 21 years old. He's cognitively about a seven-year-old. The information up there says that within your first two years, a lot of people are diagnosed with autism, especially the kind of lower functioning in. The higher functioning folks, like with Asperger's, you may not see until the age of five with speech delays. It's a cognitive disorder, autism spectrum disorder is not something that can be cured. The brain is just wired differently and the connections cause communication, learning and behavior problems. Sometimes there's really high functioning folks but don't realize that there's also a lot of folks that are non-verbal, have a lot of more physical or intellectual and particularly social challenges. Right now, the CDC is saying 1 in 36 children, which is, my shirt's from 10 years ago. It says 1 in 68 on the back and the number keeps going down on these. The puzzle pieces up there are identifying the differences in the way the brains appear to be wired and the way people with autism process and bring things together and use a symbol of the puzzle pieces. This is what the, kind of the conversation was, is that April is Autism Awareness Acceptance Month. In particular, April 2nd is World Autism Day. And tomorrow, around the world, major buildings, the White House, the Eiffel Tower, the Opera House in Sydney, the major buildings in New York, all being lit up blue. Where I live, the Concordville Fire Station puts blue light bulbs in on the outside and they leave them up for a full month and it may be partly because you've got to get up on a ladder and bring them all down to recognize autism awareness month. I understand here you have kind of a switch where you can switch on and off blue lights, but that was my suggestion to Supervisor Smith and say, why don't you come in and talk about it and help explain to the folks. So that's April Autism Acceptance Awareness Month and there's kind of a debate about half the autism community says it's awareness, the other half does acceptance. They both kind of drive to the same spot and then tomorrow's World Autism Day. And my third and last line? So my son had a very good and interesting encounter with the West Coast Police Department last fall. My American Legion post actually sponsors the Travis Mannion 9/11 Heroes Run. We get four complimentary entries and we couldn't find anybody using their posts. It's a whole bunch of old people. And I ended up giving one to the West Coast Police Department. And Michael's right there in the center of that big picture. He's a 21-year-old young man. And his support runner, Eleanor, texted us at 2:00 in the morning that she was sick and wouldn't be able to run with him. This course is pretty safe. She gives him a lot more support events like this beforehand, fitting in, socializing. He was trying to fit in with a group of high school softball players, girls, and they didn't understand who he was. And so I talked to Justin Dometica if he could hang out with the police beforehand. And he hung around with them a little. And they did a one-mile walk and they were done and he's out running a 5K that finishes with a lap around Ruston High School track. And they decided to do a really nice thing. I was running about 1,500 yards behind Michael, just keeping track of him. He wants his independence from his parents, so I'm not allowed to run with him right now. But I wanted to keep track in case something came up. As he got on the track, they jumped on the track and were going to give him a police escort for his final lap. Unfortunately, he didn't get the memo and he took off and ran the fastest quarter mile I ever seen him run. And you can see in the big picture, I'll walk up, you can see them all still chasing him. I was in the catbird seat because I'm running around, I'm probably right back here. And I could see the whole way around the track, I was expecting him to slow down. I never saw him run that fast. And they're chasing and they're not catching him. And he's, you can see him there and he's coming by. There's some people who are doing the walk here. And it was the neatest thing. We may have to get some police officers that are faster, that's all. But I really appreciated the thought and it's even better the way it played out. And I was, I was in the catbird seat to see all that. Justin just told me they're going to be doing a leg in the Special Olympics torch run at the end of May, invited Michael to come run with them. He's done a couple of legs to Villanova with the Special Olympics. They relay a torch, it's a point-to-point run, so the segment he usually does is two and a half miles. The one they're going to be in is almost five miles. And they, each of the, well, I'll just take one more, about 30 seconds of your time. The Special Olympics, one of their fundraisers is the law enforcement torch run. The Special Olympics in all 50 states have torch runs in each state. And whenever they're having a big event or competition, they'll do a torch relay from one point to another and it'll also be a fundraiser. And each of the legs are led by different law enforcement teams. And what I would found out was that West Coast had signed up for one of the legs in this torch run at the end of May. And it's pretty cool. And what your police force has done and continues to do, we really appreciate it. Just get some faster officers maybe for next year's 9/11.
Let's say Brooke's faster.
What's that?
I said, let's say, well, Brooke is faster, our new officer we hired.
His support runner, Eleanor, was actually an All-American 10,000-meter track runner in the NCAA. He even gets away from her, but not for long. And he only sprints ahead of her for about 20 yards. I was like, he's going to slow down. He did. And it was, it was really neat what they decided to do and then how it played out. Anyways, I won't take up any more immediately. If anybody has a quick question on autism or anything, I'd be happy to take it. Otherwise, thanks.
So, another question?
I have one, yes. I know, I've seen that number of 1 in 36 and I'll diagnose them. I know whatever, three generations ago was 1 in 10,000. I know because it wasn't diagnosed properly. Have they learned any more about, is it truly congenital? Is there some environmental factors or is there something between that we should know?
There's no cure. If you're there, there's really not much to turn the clock back. There's a level of understanding and adapting, as example, for running and getting out. The environmental effects in causing it, the vaccines, before Michael's time, took out the preservatives or maybe too many vaccines, but that's all out of conjecture. Maybe the food isn't as natural anymore with the preservatives and dyes putting it. But my son already has autism, there's no turning that clock back. And that's, that's why they don't want people to think that there's a cure, but there are a lot of understanding and things.
I have a question. Can people on the spectrum process sometimes visual processing easier than perhaps hearing or seeing words like that when they process a video? I mean, like they have, they have different processing on the spectrum.
Yes, ma'am. What I, what I understand through my son particularly is the filters aren't as good, especially for audio. He works noise cancelling, so the outside and running is better than the inside and...
So, like people on the spectrum may need to be offered several different ways of information input.
Yes.
Depending on what kind of, or where they are on the spectrum.
Yeah, the higher functioning folks are being hired by companies to troubleshoot webpages and stuff because they actually visually process and have a better attention to detail than a lot of, a lot of folks. And I, yeah, it's a, it's a good thing because they catch when things aren't working that aren't getting reported up. And that's a big problem with webpages. problem with webpages, is that people think, yeah, thanks for the question, ma'am, what's her, go ahead, sir.
So, friends of ours are in a similar situation, with a son with autism about the same age. He went through school, graduated, that's her curriculum, but now they can't find anything for an adult, and it puts a lot of stress on the family, to be his caretakers, full-time caretaker. Is there room for improvement on adult facilities, activities, for adults with autism?
Yes, I recently took a volunteer position with the Delaware County Board that handles mental health and intellectual disabilities, and my son, at 21, the Pennsylvania law changed two years ago, so you exit public school at your 22nd birthday, which is actually a good change, instead of leaving at a graduation time, because everybody comes into needing the resources, you're talking about it at a different time during the year, it randomizes it. And we were talking at the last meeting, because I'm in the middle of it, and the challenges, and we're have a meeting later this month with somebody that's a coordinator or a sports coordinator, and it's a scramble. This next year, we're gonna be scrambling, we volunteer at the Food Cupboard, we're getting a chance to see what he can do, in my son's case, and what works, it's challenging, because he doesn't want to work with me, he doesn't want to run with me, he wants to be independent from his parents, and that's normal for that age, but finding and coordinating those supports. And I'll say one other thing, I told the meeting group I'm on, the graduation isn't the right term, it's aging out of the public education system, because my son walked across the graduation stage two years ago. They didn't give him a real diploma, he just went across with the kids that he spent his early years in school with, in an inclusive class at high school, he was in a separate class, but kind of around the kids, and that's generally what happens, and for those who don't know, and a lot of people don't realize, that Pennsylvania changed the law to the 22nd birthday, September of almost two years ago, and it's a good change, the random helps with that. And I'm taking over your meeting.
Yeah, thank you, we appreciate the information. I guess from, through the board, I guess you're asking, Dave, if we could in West Goshen, Chambaloo, for the autism, and I guess I'm asking, you know, Chris, how that can happen, I guess the fire stations and goodwill, Good Fellowship?
They just buy blue light bulbs, I think, and so he gets on the toll ladder.
But I'm just wondering how as a township we can enforce that, is what I guess I'm asking.
Well, we can't really, we can't really enforce it.
It's just that you're built.
It's a sort of involuntary kind of thing.
Right.
It's, we could see, Mark, can you talk to Mike and see if there's something we can do in like the lobby or something like that tomorrow?
Yeah, and I think the police have the different colors, they could do that, Dr. Mike Carroll, they have the different colors, the sign outside, this police, maybe they could leave the blue color on for the whole month.
Yeah, we'll talk to our facility superintendent, he's not here this evening, but Mark will talk to him tomorrow and see if there's something we can do in the lobby.
Would it be advantageous to, I'd be willing to do it, to send an email to Good Fellowship in Goshen, and maybe the Westchester Borough, to see if they're interested in it?
Um, I think that'd be completely appropriate this morning.
Okay, I'll take the lead in doing that then also.
Yeah, they, the police said they have a, like an easy switch.
Do they do?
The switch that.
Yeah, the sign that was installed a couple years ago changes colors, and I know they'll do it for different, they'll light it up different colors for different events and recognition, so.
Yeah, that, that just kind of, and it's pretty cool the way the Eiffel Tower, all around the world, and we were in New York City 10 years ago, didn't, had never seen it and caught it by surprise, all of a sudden it's getting dark, and all the major buildings are blue, it was, it was pretty neat. And by the way, I appreciate the questions and the interest, and your questions especially, because I'm in the middle of trying to figure that out, and my commitment to that board I'm on is that I'm gonna bring the feedback on what worked and didn't work as we went through it, so at least I live in Delaware County, that they can improve the process, the communications, I already told them, don't use the word graduation, because it means something else, let's call it aging out of public education, or whatever the term is, you're, you're leaving at your, the day before your 22nd birthday.
Sir, could I just give you a quick for the record, please?
CLEA. CLEA, all right.
C, thank you.
So I'll send an email to Good Fellowship and Goshen and Fane and Westchester, to see if they're, want to do that too. Shortly notice, because tomorrow's the 2nd, but I'll send the email out tonight, okay? I'll copy.
I have an event Sunday, if I could leave the information, we're doing an autism awareness event at the Garden Valley High School track, it's a 5K run we started for my son, this will be the sixth one he's done, and we do it every April, and you don't necessarily need to run a 5K or, or walk 5K, you can just come out and learn more about autism, and it's really a good setup for families that are particularly new to autism, we talk about a lot of safety issues, and it's a pretty good information opportunity, assuming it doesn't rain.
Do you have flyers, I'm happy to put them in the, I'm happy to put them.
Do you want it electronically, or do you want it?
I can make copies of those.
Okay. I'm gonna step away, thank you for your time, and thank you.
It's too late for tonight, because the agenda's already been publicized, but next year, make sure you remind us, we can pass a resolution to celebrate April 2nd as World Autism Day.
Of course, you put it in your ticker and remember, and not put the action on either. We just had a, I didn't know till Friday that she was on the supervisor, so we're a little bit behind this year. I throw it back, you put a ticker out there on your calendar, so you remind, because there's a good chance.
Okay, we'll do a resolution for next year.
I don't, I don't live here, there's a good chance I'd forget to get back to you.
Okay.
But thanks for your time, and thanks for the interesting discussion.
Thank you. Is anyone else who has a public comment?
You guys are just flowing.
Very good, we'll move on then to agenda item number five, which is discussion, discussion of possible awarding of the 2025 West Goshen Township Paving Program bid. Chris, do you want to introduce this, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so before the board supervisors this evening are the bid results for the township's 2025 paving program and award recommendation of Carol Engineering. In addition, our street superintendent, Mark Berlami, is here this evening to answer any questions that the board may have. I provided a list of the roads scheduled in this year's paving program, as well as some details that Mark provided for, for this year's program. So there's a total mileage outline to pave 4.36 miles, and I'll note that some of these roads haven't been paved since they were dedicated to the township. So the bids were open on March 25th, and there were eight bids received, they ranged from low, a low amount of $940,777 to a high amount of $1,413,375. So the apparent low bidder is Allen Myers LP, and I will note that the bid amount is about 22% below the budget. Mark put in $1.2 million for the 2025 paving program. So Allen Myers is the apparent low bidder, and this would be the fifth project in the last 10 years that they've completed for the township if awarded the contract, they previously completed projects in 2017, 2020, 2021, and 2022. So based on the bid results and the information outline, we're recommending awarding the bid for the township's 2025 paving program to Allen Myers LP in the amount of $940,777, based on their bid dated March 25th, and is recommended by Carol Engineering Corporation.
Thank you, Chris. Mark, I have a question related to, obviously you have an estimate of what it's gonna be, and I know it's half the bids were below the budget estimate and half are above it, so, you know, kind of right in the middle there. Is it worth an hour, would you have liked to have done more mileage, knowing where this actual low bid came in?
A, a little bit, maybe like a half mile.
Yeah, is there, is there a way to have an option when we bid this, so that if, you know, one year we get bids for the must-dos, if you, I don't know how to explain it, but the ones that you really want to get done, and then have an option, if they do come in relatively lower, you could add some additional roads, is that a possible approach you could use?
I think it's a possibility, but I have to check with the PennDOT rep, if you're ready to select the fuels to approve the project before it goes out.
So that's a prerequisite, you have to get PennDOT approval?
Yes, if you use, if you use liquid fuels, I've done this, if you use liquid fuels, PennDOT has to approve your project and your specifications before you're allowed to put them up the bid.
But that doesn't mean that you would necessarily object to have an additional potential mileage? I mean, as long as you feel it exists.
They also, they also review the bid spec on how you structure it too. PennDOT is very, PennDOT's gotten very, very picky about how you put the stuff out, because of the fair amount that you're spending.
Okay, good, well, we're gonna spend more than their money into some of our own money, right?
Yes, but PennDOT, and Mark, you can speak to this, because I know you've been dealing with it, was PennDOT, they review everything and pre-approve it, so you can put it on the pre-approval, but I don't, there's a process to go through to take it off the pre-approval as well if you don't award the contract.
It's an alternate bid, like if, like add A or add B, I think we've done that in other things, it seems like before. But I'm not saying you shouldn't check the PennDOT, I'm saying, it seems to me like as long as it's bid in that manner, and it's, it's written in the bid spec that it's at the discretion of the board to award the alternate bid, it seems like that would be appropriate. Now, that follows the procurement laws, whether there's a special rule for using liquid fuels, I don't, I'm not aware of that.
But we could add, we could.
Couldn't add it now, you can't add it now.
Because that was my question, Eric, was the possibility of doing Warren Road in Somerset in conjunction with Hotwood, you know, they dug up that road, and they replaced a lot of the water main there, and you have all these patches which are falling apart already.
It was paved seven years ago, that's the only thing, do we want to spend that kind of money, when that road was paved seven years ago?
Yeah, it's just that now there's been all tore up.
Yeah.
Well, that's something we'll look at maybe for next year.
I mean, it'll be resurfaced for our ordinance.
Oh, okay, so, you mean this year will be?
Yes, but not the entire width of the road, some areas will be retired, some areas will be done.
Gotcha, okay. Let me ask you a question on the, on their, on Allen Myers, you worked with them before, right? I mean, so.
Probably thirteen to fifteen times here.
Do they have a record for throwing extras at you, you know, above and beyond their original bid?
Um, no, I mean, sometimes their quantities have come in higher, so you have to really make sure the inspections are good and not putting it down too thick. Sometimes it comes right on the money tip, now, keep in mind, this $940,000 doesn't mean the end of the $940,000, there could be a lot of base repair that could raise that up to 1.1 million.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, what was your experience with it in the last, I mean, we've used it quite a lot in most recent years, have they typically been 10, 15% above the base bid because of the fact they needed to do road repairs, or is it all just dependent on the, on the roads you're doing that particular year?
I've seen last year we had zero, I've seen it up to about, I think, $140,000 a year.
Mark, what is the quality of the material that Meyer uses in comparison to one or the other, high, high-end?
I mean, it passes all the tests, it passed the compaction test, I found, just my observation, it could hold up a little bit longer.
Because of the material that they use, the type of material that they use, yeah, but you can't turn a bid down for the material that they use.
Well, I mean, do you have a specification, Ryan, mixing specifications, so?
And it meets spec, right?
They use a little bit, from my bird, they use a little bit more recycled materials when making the blacktop, and it's just, I've been doing this a long time, it's my observation that it doesn't seem to hold up as long, by the way.
Is that at Allen Myers, just if you can know specifically, or?
Yeah, I mean, they do good work, it does hold up, I just wish it held up a little bit longer.
Do you take corn samples, right, or do they take corn samples, and they get to a lab, make sure it meets the PennDOT inspection and all that, they give you written reports to that effect?
Absolutely.
I'm just curious, looking at their bid there now, for their milling, for 1.5 inches of milling depth, they're charging $1.70 per square yard, but for five inches of milling depth, you only charge a dollar, how does that work?
That's the way of getting rounds sometimes. They're hoping, they're hoping not to do the base there, that's what I get at that.
So they're really minimizing the amount of yardage, because they really were low, low ball in that compared to the other.
It's gonna be up to me and the inspectors to really watch them, and when you find slot areas where, like, you have to do that there.
So you, you're there, keep an eye on their work as they proceed?
I'm there as much as I can be, I, sometimes I'll grab someone from staff, but we'll have a Carol inspector out there to do it.
I'm just curious why their mobilization is so much higher than everybody else at $143,000, and the others are in the range of $8,000, $58,000, I know in the end their cost is lower, but their mobilization is just so much higher than the others.
Well, the way these contractors sometimes bid this is they, they are free to put costs against any of the line items that are shown on this list, and it's their way of protecting their margins on certain elements of their bids, so you have to look at the bottom line, unfortunately, unless it's something where you know you may need additional costs.
I just don't think there's an additional reason why.
I, I have it in paragraphs of like five different sections, so they're really not moving around that long, you know, five miles.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you consider Allen Myers to be a responsible contractor.
Absolutely.
So we really don't have much to discuss, I mean, according to second-class township code, we have to take the lowest bid.
That was responsible bid.
Lowest responsible, right.
They did good work.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, let's make a motion, is there anyone here on the board willing to make a motion to approve Allen Myers for the paving bid for 2025 in the amount of $940,777? So we have a motion from John, a second from Tina, is there any public questions or comments about the motion? Margie?
Yeah, I just have a question about Monterey Lane, Darlington Circle, Merritt. I'm just familiar with that neighborhood, because I occasionally walk over there, and I just don't ever, remember, like, saying, I think they, the roads were disrepair or in need of being repaired, so is, is that job based on just the time since it was dedicated, or is it truly a need?
And if you really drive or we've cracked steel it before, there's a lot of improvement on that road in that neighborhood, so I'm expecting some base repair in there. So it's a combination of, there is showing signs of the T and the H of it, and if you wait too long, you're gonna have to spend up more, spend more money on base repair than that.
Yeah, I know, and I've seen quite a few stormwater repairs that drank the basin, you know, however many feet surrounding it.
Right now, my guys are in there replacing a lot of the c tops, and we have to manhole bits to make sure everything's ready to go.
According to your paving schedule, there, that was dedicated in 2001, it hasn't been paved since, right? So you're talking about 24 years, Margie, and it hasn't even been done, so, at least the average lifetime of road service could stay about 20 years, something like that, can't be pinwheel behind the truck.
I've seen anywhere from 13 to 25 years.
Any other questions, Sal?
Question, kind of two-part, with respect to Allen Myers versus the competition there. Is there a difference between the bids on what could be considered change order base, justifiable change order base, which might tip the scales if you find more, you know, undiscovered, unspecified in the contract work, and relative to the time you work with Allen Myers, did they find more things than the other guys, if you will?
I guess, looking at you, Mark, the decision is really you, yours, the township's as to whether you want base repair done in certain, when they do the milling, right, you're gonna look at it and say, this needs to be done, so you're given a direction on additional work beyond the scope, is that correct?
Yep, usually being the inspector, once they mill it, will walk it out, and you'll see the fatigue there, and sort of salt, sometimes a loaded truck, as it's driving, and if that moves, we'll mark that for base repair, but then we'll give them five, which is, we do that.
That answers one of Sal's questions, the other point, the other one is, is, is the fact that if you find a lot of base repair, we could end up with more cost with Allen Myers than one of the other bids, is that a potential outcome of this approach?
Right.
I guess, I, I know sometimes your bid, you know, it's unit cost for everything, including things like, you know, the unexpected, so if you were to go on quote-unquote, it's unfair to say, the average job where it's like, fine, 10% of all the square footage is gonna be repaired, if you factor in the typical percentage, does the change, does the low bidder change all of a sudden?
I can answer that for you, Mark. So, the, Allen Myers has bid for the milling as a, as a dollar a square yard, the next lowest bid was $4.20 a square yard for base repair. Allen Myers bid $10 a ton for base repair, next lowest bid was $54 a ton.
So you're saying Allen Myers is cheaper on base repair as well?
Yes, their base repair was the cheapest, by far the cheapest, so even if base repair becomes required, their unit costs were still the lowest.
And we're, and we, as in the township, is deciding what, how many square feet of base repair is supposed to be done, so it's in our, it's in the control. And we, as in the township, is deciding what, how many square feet of base repair is supposed to be done. So it's in our, it's in the control of that. Okay.
So we could rebuild the road with base repair and they have.
Yeah, do it for that price.
So it's like you could nail out the bill.
Have you ever run into an impasse between yourself and a contractor on base repair issues where you're saying it needs to be done and it's, you know, it's not necessary to? All right. Any other questions? Ed writes it.
Yeah, Eric, someone mentioned that about the repairs that Lockwood did and the road being from, somebody mentioned.
Yeah, because now.
Yeah. Is there a remedy for repair if where the margins are, the older pavement to new pavement that's coming apart? Or is that a touch of cost? And it's a little bit irrelevant, but at the same time, it goes in the total. Is that, is that a cost of Lockwood if the premature we, deteriorates?
I believe our ordinance says that if we have repaved or were in the set period of time, they have to repay, repave it. Is that correct, Mark?
Yeah, but are you saying if it fails, evidently?
Yeah, like on the edges between the, or because they're only like paved half of the road.
Right.
Or just echo into this?
Well, they have to repave it to our orders, to our standards. And I don't think I've ever had an issue with it.
Your name, sorry?
I'm sorry, I put your name wrong. I apologize. I should put my regular glasses on, I think. Any other questions on the paving bid, the motion? Okay, then we're ready to take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes five zero. Agenda item number six, discussion on possible approval of a proposal from SoftDig for CCTV hydro jetting services for the corrugated metal pipe storm sewer system in the Canterbury development. Chris, would you introduce this one, please?
Hi, yes, Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening, this proposal from SoftDig to complete CCTV and hydro jetting services for the corrugated metal pipe in Canterbury development, this development was constructed in the mid to late nineteen eighties. As the board is aware, the township is actively completing CMP replacement lining in the Fresh Meadows development. Mark has identified this development as the next area of CMP to address. The township has completed two major repairs in this development recently. In 2023, there was a full circumference lining project completed by National Gunny from Loxley Drive, which was the result of a sinkhole that opened up in a property owner's yard. And in 2025, another lining project.
So it's twenty-four, Chris?
No, that was twenty.
This is this year?
The Cotswold, we just wrapped up.
Just did it? Okay, so was this, all right?
That was approved by the board in January, I believe. So this, this was a lining project on Cotswold Lane, and that was also completed by National Gunny. And that was to address storm pipe that showed signs of failure. Prior to undertaking the work, Mark and I believe it's the best, it's best to have a video completed of the condition of the remaining pipe in this development and would involve four streets, which are Cotswold Lane, Mackenzie Drive, Cromwell Lane, and Loxley Drive. If this proposal is approved by the board and the camera work shows that the CMP needs to be, needs to be lined or replaced, we would have Carol Engineering Corporation outline a cost analysis and survey of the estimate to complete the work, which was similar to the course of action taken with the Fresh Meadows development. Additionally, I'd like to note that Mark's goal is for our Public Works team to complete as much of the work in-house as possible going forward. Cost of the proposal is eleven thousand eight hundred dollars and can be paid out of the Capital Reserve Fund, but this project was not included in the 2025 budget.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Mark, I already asked you this question in email ahead of the meeting, but just, just for the record here, that there are other streets in that Canterbury neighborhood, because like, at least I think they're in Canterbury, but I think you explained it a little, it's a little different. So there's Woodbridge Way, Sussex Road, Bantry Road, and Harvest Lane. You revise those streets, those, that system was built at a separate time from the streets that you're actually proposing for this SoftDig contract, correct? Questions for Mark or anyone on the proposal?
Do you have an idea on how many literate feet we're talking about here?
I don't. And that's the goal of the camera. I can figure it out, but doing this camera work, we'll be able to figure that.
You're not expecting to use the hydro jetting, are you, because of the expected condition of, or potential failure if you do use it on the pipe? Or what do you think?
We need to hydro jet it to get a better picture of it.
Okay.
Yes, you may have to do it, right? I mean, the pipe is not, can't even get the count down, or you may have to judge.
I mean, do you run the risk of causing a problem with the pipe even more, right?
We do. We've got the low pressure.
Yeah.
I have trouble with success with the low pressure.
Okay.
What's the diameter of the pipe there?
I don't know that either. I know down low, we've had related pipes done repaired already, thirty-six. Typically, down at the lower end where all the water ends up, the pipes are larger, up higher, closer to the road road. The pipes will be smaller, I probably tell you that, which is basically my guess.
How long do you think the project would take?
Camera work? I think they said three or four weeks. But if they come in last, they'll talk.
Are you expecting to move to this neighborhood in terms of the CMP repair work this year? Or is it, are you going to still be completing Fresh Meadows for the majority of the time?
Doing Fresh Meadows, yeah.
Okay. So this is going to give you a heads up for next year then, really, in terms of amount of work, cost, et cetera?
Right.
And you, you like SoftDig as a vendor, I believe. We use them routinely, right?
Yeah.
Just so the board's aware, so this is through CoStar's, correct, Mark? This is through CoStar's and this is who we've utilized for our back truck program in recent years. So we've worked with them at least for the last two years through our back truck program.
And I did get another price earlier in the year, and I think for more construction, I can do just three fifty per hour.
So they're charging two forty, correct?
Two ninety-five. This is two ninety-five.
Two ninety-five, I'm sorry. Two ninety-five.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve proposal from SoftDig in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred for counter jetting in the Canterbury neighborhood. This is a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any public cast of questions on the motion or the proposed work? Margie?
Someone remind me what happened to the Army Corps of Engineers. They videotaped or I thought they camered all these CMP pipes a few years ago.
They did not do the full pipes. They were doing mainly the inlets and they were using a pole camera, which can only see a few feet beyond the inlet into the storm sewer system. We got the data set from them. We were not very happy with it. And we had HRG, if you remember, do a review of all the information to identify the priority areas for going in and actually doing repair work. And Mark analyzed that with, I forget, was it with Brian or was it with Brian? And they came up with a prioritized list, and that's why we started with Fresh Meadows. So based on their own experience of neighborhoods that have the biggest problems, Fresh Meadows was one, Canterbury's was number two. And you've just, as Chris explained, we had two problems that we had to emergency repair with National Gunny. And each one of those was pretty expensive, if I was, if I remember so. Hopefully, we went on to the second neighborhood by twenty-six.
Did you pay them two hundred thousand dollars to do that work? Fifty thousand dollars over?
I don't think they finished the work. We paid them some of it, maybe half or three quarters, but they never finished the work. It happened during COVID and all work stopped and we decided we had enough of working with them and we moved on. But they did have enough information for us to go review it with HRG to look at, again, determine the priority neighborhoods. Any other questions? Okay, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes five zero. Next is agenda item number seven, discussion on possible approval of resolution number twelve, twenty twenty-five, granting preliminary final land development approval for an application at thirteen Hagerty Boulevard, Goshen Leisure, amending the parking configuration for new building on the site that has been previously approved. And Brian, would you mind introducing this to the board?
Good evening. Tonight, Goshen Leisure, the last building in the development, which is Building Three, is in front of you for approval. This building was previously approved under a previous land development. In front of you on the screen is the previous plan, which shows Building Three and has the parking in a, in the front and rear of the building. The new layout, which is in front of you tonight, has modified. That's still the old one. That's the last sheet of the layout side. That's why. There it is. So the new one has changed the configuration and has provided parking along the face of the building for better access to the building. Stormwater, which was previously above ground, which was two above-ground basins, is now proposed to be in. An underground storage bed underneath the parking area and one to the northern building. Neither of them are designed as infiltration as this building is being built on the top of the old landfill site. So using the ordinance and the requirements of DDP, the applicant engineer has designed this called a natural release concept to release it into the infiltration bed, which is located in the rear of the property.
So they're connected?
Yes, they are, they are connected through the internal drainage system. They have their MPDS permit, which was amended and issued the end of January. In the January, they have addressed all the comments from the township and in front of you today is a resolution for approval. Adam, the engineer's here, as is the applicant, both of you are going to answer your questions.
What is the treatment in the infiltration system prior to the final discharge, if not?
The system prior to this one?
No, this one, this current one.
So it's using the, the underground storage, as Brian mentioned. And typically, they have some condition that were quality inlets to have all the sediments drop out. So that's the, the quality function of that type of system.
Okay, and what are the sediments going to be treated, how are they going to be treated, the sediments, before finally flowing?
Well, it prevents them from continuing downstream, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so they'll stay there, the sediments?
Correct. And then it's a continuing maintenance obligation that you have to go in and get that sediment out of the bottom of the structures.
Is that, I mean, it's probably the same question I'm going to ask. Is that in the MPDS permit as far as the maintenance?
It is.
And that's a monthly, or?
Typically, it's, it's more involved early on. I think it's a couple of times a year, I believe. You get down to, I believe it's once a year and or a minimum once a year, but after any major storm event, you'll also have to go and check on it.
But you're sampling and then the effluent is on a weekly and average monthly basis?
There's no sample. This isn't like, this isn't like a water treatment. This is the construct, MPDS for construction, not for water treatment, like sewer plant. It's the same program, but two different programs. That's a water quality management permit. This is an MPDS construction permit.
Is the maintenance agreement, do no one have agreement with the township?
It will be. It's not signed. It's not done yet because there's still a couple of things they have to do yet that are minor. And one of the things that, that's when the last treatment's prepared because it references the plan by date.
Just curious, is there actually any change in the number of parking spaces with the reorientation?
I think there may have been in single digits a few that we increased, I believe. It's a more efficient layout. But I don't recall, I think like five, like we're talking like that type of.
And that didn't, that didn't impact the impervious coverage and redo calculations for stormwater management or anything?
The stormwater was already done for the MRC program. So it's all brought up to current working standards.
But it was based on a certain amount of impervious coverage, right?
It's based on the new layout. The stormwater for Building Three is based on the new layout, not the old layout.
Got it. Any other questions from the board?
Well, the planning commission, which recommended approval of this, it was concerned about the, the new parking arrangement, the parking spaces being in front of the building for pedestrian and also personnel safety. Are there any ballards that are going to be placed along that?
There isn't. I mean, it, it does have the full height curve.
Which is how high?
Eight inches.
Eight inches, eight-inch curve.
And what you have in this situation, your drive aisle is parallel to the building. So you don't have a car that would be accelerating. You're really, you're turning ninety degrees into the parking space. And that's the extent of the, of the movement. So, so you don't have a situation where you have drive aisles where a vehicle can, can go faster and possibly get over that curb.
Well, like you said, you have eight-inch curb there, too.
Correct.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twelve, twenty twenty-five, granting approval of the amended final land development filed by Goshen Leisure Development for thirteen Hagerty Boulevard. John, a second. Is there any public, any other questions on this? Doug?
Hey, John, thank you for the question.
Sorry?
I didn't see you, Doug.
Thank you for the question.
I thought, oh, sorry, I just jumped in here, buddy. Okay.
Anyone else have a question? Okay, we're ready to take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello with your project. Okay, next is agenda item number eight, which is discussion on possible approval of resolution number thirteen, twenty twenty-five, authorizing the transfer of two million dollars from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund. So I'll introduce this. So before the board, it's proposed resolution number thirteen, twenty twenty-five. This would authorize the transfer of two million dollars from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund. The township's twenty twenty-five budget authorized an interfund transfer of three million from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund. And this resolution would increase the total transfer to five million dollars. The board is authorized to take this action pursuant to section three two oh two F of the Pennsylvania Second Class Township Code. So if you remember during our budget approval process back in November, December, I had asked for an increase to this, to the five million dollars between the preliminary budget phase and the final budget approval. And Margie had raised a concern that was this an acceptable process? Because it had not been part of what had been advertised in the preliminary budget. At the time of the final budget approval meeting, we took a conservative approach of saying, okay, we don't have, we're not hundred percent convinced of an answer this, this evening. And we deferred, we eliminated that transfer. And here we are, ninety days into the new year, and are allowed now to move the additional amount of money. So that's the background to it. I will make a motion to authorize approval of resolution number thirteen, twenty twenty-five, which transfers two million dollars from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund. Thank you. Is there any board questions or public questions on the motion? Charlie?
Just a couple of points, not to take up too much time, but I believe specifically in December, the amount moved exceeded a specific amount. That amount being exceeded, we've had to go now to advertisement again. And what we did is, instead of going out for advertisement, we just delayed that extra two million dollars to, after three months into twenty twenty-five. My question is, do we need the two million dollars? Do we need the five millions to begin with? Is it particularly earmarked to something in the budget that must be spent in twenty twenty-five?
So it's two points there. The first answer to the, the first point you raised is, we actually could have approved it at that meeting. It was not something that was in violation of the township code, so we could have approved it. Even though the number itself, when you compare it to a particular requirement in the code, that code did not apply to an. that code did not apply to an interfund transfer. It was to do with a fund that receives revenues and has expenses from it, which an interfund transfer does not. So we could have perfectly done it in the meeting. We just didn't reach that conclusion in the meeting itself.
Thank you.
To your second point, this, you know, we have discussed several projects. We just talked about whether Mark can move on to doing Canterbury this year. That was not in the budget. If we have sinkholes that appear, as we've had every year so far, we'll probably have unbudgeted expense. That comes out of our capital reserve fund. We have a healthy balance in the general fund. And this was, what I had suggested would be a pro fix transfer back in the budget cycle last year. So we're just finishing that process up.
Yeah, I was hoping Mark would stick around and help answer that question. I guess our point of view, budget watchdogs, is it was so contentious last year about where the general fund balance sat at the end of the year. We figured it was around twenty-one point six. I'm not sure if the final numbers were in, but I think it was exceeding twenty-two million dollars maybe. And transferring that two million dollars at the end of last year would have given the public the perception that, well, maybe we were under twenty million dollars in G F B. So from our point of view, because it was so contentious, we wanted to get to the right number. So I guess with the treasurer's report this year in Twenty Twenty Five, I guess we can see what the general fund balance was going into January and February and March. And if it wasn't such a contentious point, I probably wouldn't be making any of these comments. But for the record, I think the budget watchdogs were pretty right on every, almost every quarter with our forecasting, where we thought that general fund balance is. And of course, we think the general fund balance is just way too high. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion, Charlie. Any other comments? Margie?
Thank you. That just brought something to my mind. Going back to October of Twenty Twenty Two, H R G did an analysis regarding our forward-looking end-of-year balances in the general fund. Because, I believe it was end of Twenty Twenty One, the township engaged H R G to look at the issue of the stormwater fee, or as you all know, I like to call it rain tax. So I stumbled upon those documents over the past week. And I was shocked at just October of Twenty Twenty Two, what the projections were. So there were two projections incorporating all these stormwater costs that, you know, were needed, needed to be done. And at that time, in conjunction with staff and a couple supervisors, it was estimated that by the end of Twenty Twenty Four, the five-year plan, the, using a five-year plan to pay off the certain stormwater expenses, five-year plan was like eight million dollars end-of-year general fund balance. Eight-year plan, spreading out these expenses, it was four million dollars, or maybe that was reversed. If we took out a bond and we had debt, then maybe we'd have twelve million dollars. So my point being, even at the end of Twenty Twenty Two, you don't need to answer my question. It's kind of rhetorical. How, how did we end up being so far off by ending Twenty Twenty Four with twenty-two million dollars when just in Twenty Twenty Two, we were looking at half of that, less than half of that?
Well, first of all, H R G was projecting on all kinds of costs and outcomes and investments that did not actually occur, some of them, and some of them did. Secondly, we did do a full-throated discussion of this, as to where all these changes came from. The American Rescue Plan Act gave us a nice two point four million dollars that we spent on stormwater that was not in the H R G assessment for sure. There were other sources of revenue that we discussed. The interest rate is giving us about two million dollars of extra income. The home sales in Woodlands have been way up there in price. We've got a lot of transfer tax. So I refer you to go back to the YouTube videos, which we're going to be talking about next.
Yes, I will. Hold on, I just lost my train. I thought there was one last thing regarding that, but I lost it. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then we're ready to take a vote. I think we did have a motion accepted, right, Chris? Yes. Let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Here and now, the motion passes five zero. So next is Agenda Item Number Nine, which is possible approval of Resolution Number Fourteen, Twenty Twenty Five. I will introduce this subject. So before the board this evening is a proposed Resolution Fourteen, Twenty Five, which would establish a policy for retention of videos on the township YouTube channel. So a way of introduction to this, I had been looking at some neighboring townships and boroughs and their policy on media retention. And my own personal concerns about the swamp that's out there in terms of the social media landscape, I thought we should have a potential policy for retention of video of the township meetings. We have certainly received some emails suggesting that our proposed three months is way too short and that we should reconsider that. So this is an open discussion for the board and the public this evening to see what we think is an appropriate way forward. So I've certainly read the emails that I received and feel that some good points were made. Just to reinforce the intention behind the video, it is a recording that allows, it is a live stream. So the intention is that you can participate in actual, real time. You can put a comment in and Chris will look at it. And if there's a question being raised about a particular subject, you can try that with the board, you can try and address it in the meeting. It is also a way for obviously people to view what happens at the meetings post the actual date because we know everybody cannot always attend on a certain day or at a certain time. And then thirdly, it allows certainly for ability to make sure that we have good meeting minutes recorded after the actual event because we don't always get the notes right without the ability to go back and look at something. And in addition to all those points, there was in our original policy, which was established in Twenty Sixteen, which was before any of us here were on the board, which suggests that having audio/video recordings would be useful in the event of any litigation against the township. And it did not, in our policy from Twenty Sixteen, give a specific retention period. It just says that they should be retained if it's unnoticed that a matter may result in litigation. So unfortunately, it was very unclear. So another reason for trying to see at least what this current board feels is an appropriate policy. As I said, I've certainly received some feedback around three months, and I certainly believe we can adjust that. I think a longer period of time, based on what people have said, would allow for folks to have really to access it. And I noticed, Margie, that in your public comments, you certainly have used it to go back to the Woodlands at Greystone conversations that happened at meetings in the past. So I'm open. I do personally believe we should have some kind of retention policy, whether that's five, six years, I don't know. But clearly, three months is not something that I'm going to support tonight. So other board members, let's hear from you, and then we'll turn it over to anybody who wants to make a comment.
Just to kind of paint the picture of the boundaries of all here. First of all, I'd be asked this question. Do we have any requirement by law, township code, or statute to have recordings be made of public meetings?
No.
So we don't have to do it, right? I mean, we, the board, which isn't this board, but is prior board, decided back in Twenty Sixteen that it would be a good exercise in transparency of local government to have video recordings made. And for that reason, we've been doing it since Twenty Sixteen. And I just checked the website last night. You can go back to October nineteen, Twenty Sixteen, and there was videos from that that went on all the way up until, well, tonight. So they're there. So let me ask another question. What were the townships doing that are recording their meetings? Not all do, but those that do do record their meetings, how long do they retain their videos? Do you have any idea?
It varies from municipality to municipality. East Goshen doesn't have, East Goshen, Westchester Borough don't have retention policy. West Whiteland does a year, I believe. I believe West Town does six months. I know, just from looking at the website, Mountland Borough does ninety days.
Did they, was that in place before you left Mountland or?
No, that was last year, I believe.
So it's a big step. And it's fully up to the board, right, to decide what they want to do, if they want to do?
Correct. The municipal records manual, which is the official policy of the township, states that they should be retained until the minutes are approved. And then if they have any kind of administrative value. There's no set timeline on them.
And there is no cost to retaining it, right? Chris, we're not paying for storage on YouTube or a channel cost or anything? No? Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, so is there anyone here who has a comment they'd like to make? Ms. Weber?
I had a question. Can you cite the neighboring townships that you were looking at, Mr. Walsh?
West Town, six months. West Whiteland is one year. The Borough does not have any retention policy. East Goshen doesn't livestream. They do, they record it, and then their township manager posts it on their website. So Zoom recording or something, I believe. Does the surrounding one, does East Bradford record their meetings?
I don't find any.
Does East Bradford record their meetings? Does the surrounding municipalities? Any other questions?
I have a comment, but go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll learn to stand up.
Well, you did. Go first. Yeah, I'll go after you.
I emailed our supervisors to ask about how and why the ordinance came to be proposed. Although I appreciated receiving at least one reply from Mr. Wallman, no questions were answered, not by him or anyone else. This ordinance leaves our township with the bare minimum legal requirements for transparency, accessibility, and retention of video recordings. Our residents deserve more than the bare minimum. From a review by Mark Pyman titled "Curbing Corruption in Local Government," Section Two Point Five, "The more resistance there is to publishing data, the more likely is that there is some corruption reason behind it." Section Two Point Five Point One, "The anti-corruption world is no different from most other walks of life in that people always want to know how they're doing compared with their peers. I offer East Town Township's code, adopted four years ago, quote, 'Audio and video recordings of the Public B O S and Planning Commission meetings are created and made available to the public to promote government transparency, public engagement, and convenience.' We already have publicly accessible. Almost ten years of video recordings on our website. Why are we taking that away from our residents? Within the Municipal Records Manual for Local Governments, Policy Section Five Point Eight states, 'The implementation and use of an electronic records-keeping system should not limit or hinder public access to public records.' Mr. Bayshore, we pay annually towards your I C M A membership and attendance to their conferences, this year being held in Florida. On January first, Article I C M A's Ethics Officer mentions, 'Local governments must operate in a transparent manner committed to democratic principles to advance public trust. The approach continues to be the hallmark of communities with professional local government management. Professionals do not play favorites, and the organization's actions directly influence public trust to our institutions. And she directs you to hold yourself accountable to the highest ethical standards and address breaches in public trust when others fall short.' Another recent post on I C M A, 'Modern Meetings, Better Governance, Highlights Enhancing Transparency and Boosting Citizen Engagement.' Our manager should be working on ways he can further implement transparency. Our manager should be working on how our seniors and disabled can interact more in livestream meetings in real time and should be implementing video recordings of all planning commission meetings. Our supervisor should be directing him towards these type of goals. The first quarter of Twenty Twenty Five has come to a close, and as of two P M. today, there are no videos or minutes of our planning commission that are easily accessible to residents. And you're working to take more information away from us? Thank you."
Thank you for your comment. Does anyone else with a comment? Sal?
Sal Prusko? I'm here to basically speak on this point with respect to, I guess, three different angles. I see no value, but I'm not going to criticize. And I see no value in removing any information that already exists. But I wanted to look at this in three separate ways. And the first would be strictly practical. And as Margie had basically just showed us early in this meeting, there's information there that can be gleaned, that can be used, that is historical in nature, that, you know, becomes something where it just becomes reminded to us. And then obviously, something like that is very important to us because minutes, as they may be, are editorialized to the best of anyone's ability. But merely going to the second point, I believe there's a moral obligation here. Again, there's nothing legal, nothing official. But I think there's a moral obligation to the taxpayers and the whatever, the one-a-thousand households and so forth. I don't know how many people that owes a voter, but some tens of thousands of people, that we have a moral obligation to be reasonable and open about everything we do. And especially if there is documentation that exists that we now want to remove, to me, there's a certain moral disobligation there. But to the third and more important point, which I think was so very well characterized here, there's a level of transparency that in this day and age, and I've skipped the politics part of that. I mean, there's so many things that are so cloaked and daggered at this point in our lives. The idea of not leaving information there or not publishing it going forward, I think is horrendous. Especially since there's no cost to the township. Where here, you put that camera out there for a reason, whatever number of years ago, and I think it's exceptional. I think it's a fantastic idea. It shows the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I think we all saw some of that in the past year or two, and it's no big deal. It is what it is. So why try to do anything other than hide it, other than if there is something to hide? That's the only thing that I liked to speak about here. It's, I think there's three obligations, the practical, the moral, and more importantly, the transparent. So I don't see any reason why this is even a discussion in the first place and why policy needs to be in place. Unless that policy is record and leave it there until YouTube yanks it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Does anyone else with a comment? Doug?
Evening, Doug White. What's your question? I'd be in favor of keeping the information. At first, I wasn't crazy about the video recording, but I do understand, um, Margie, they helped Margie. And I liked seeing the video when you approved the courtyard. I also like seeing Ray and Phil and Chris kind of coming about it. Brings back memories. But my opinion would be to keep it. But if you must remove it, are the, is the raw footage still going to be kept at the township? Available for, if you decide to take it off the internet after some period of time, is it still going to exist here in the township in files where a township resident could come and view it or request it on an individual basis?
I have a capability to download it.
The intention was to get it off the internet, really, so, but if we could, we could, we could, like East Goshen, we could keep a hard, we could keep a digital copy of the township.
So the views will still exist here in the township?
You'd have to come and get it or request it.
Right. So they'll still exist? Okay.
It could.
Okay, but you're in the.
Wait, well, the resolution doesn't address that. It just says it gets it off the, just so we don't.
I see. And you're, maybe your concern is that it's too public or something.
Whose benefit is it for? Everyone up there, nobody back here?
For your request, trying to.
But unless there's a downside, I would, I prefer to keep it if it benefits people. Thanks for my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Charlie?
So those are all good points.
So those are all good points. Mine are more personal. Like I said, with the budget discussions and the budget watchdogs, it was very contentious last year. We thought we were taking Christine Riffey's data and tabulating it and organizing it and having discussions with the board. We were accused of being liars.
I don't think that's correct, but go ahead.
And my response to that was if there is anything that's incorrect or lies, we'd be glad to fix it. And we were asked not to fix anything. I believe what's in video last year does not make the board look very well. Ms. Gagne is running for office for Board of Supervisors this year. I don't think she can win if these videos stay on the internet. I think we've never received a public rescind of the lies that we were accused of, and I think those videos show what we need to see. That's it. The last thing is, this is public domain. I don't know that you can remove a document from public domain. I don't know that you can prevent another organization from reposting these minutes. It's public domain. And I think the board should consider that. I don't know, I haven't heard anything about the rules or laws for public domain, but it's certainly, these videos are listed with the meeting minutes. And of course, we're all outraged about the three months because meeting minutes come out about three months, and it's nice to compare the videos to the meeting minutes and be able to comment. Lastly, last point. The Republicans do have a candidate for Board of Supervisors. He is currently reviewing many years of videos to look at the issues. It helps to review not only planning board-type issues, but mainly the budget. And there's a lot of things that are discussed that cannot be, let's say, translated well enough into meeting minutes. It helps to look at these videos, especially for being able to contribute at a higher level when we discuss things on the budget. So like your opinion, Sean, on GFB shouldn't be capped? I don't believe the storage or the videos on the internet should ever be capped. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Of course, I disagree with some of what you said because I don't believe anyone was specifically called a liar, but what some corrections made to the budget information and the rule of comment, so I can't remember now, but I did agree with...
I'm sorry, that's just how I get when I hear lies.
And also, to be clear, there's not even a legal requirement that we make videos of these meetings. That's just the legality of it.
But that's my point, once it's in public domain.
Then, if there's not a legal requirement, they make these videos, but certainly there's any legal requirement, they really have to keep them.
Why the point?
I just, I don't care.
It just, it just shows power. That's all it is. It shows power, I mean...
I don't really care. I mean, we got videos back in 2016, huh?
Fantastic. I'm gonna pull up, and I'm gonna pull up the one that is in question right now.
Okay, so is there any other new public comment? Margie?
First off, I must thank you very much for letting the people speak before you made a motion in a second, and that means a lot. Again, a simple gesture, that's what would be a nice change, that you did that for every agenda item. Mr. Walsh, you just quoted, "The intention was to get them, get it off the internet." What's your reasoning behind that?
Well, it's my personal view, and again, I'm not, I can't speak to the rest of the board. We haven't heard whether they're gonna vote in favor of this, not have a motion or anything. We don't know yet, but we're having a discussion on it. The internet has become a place of misinformation, misappropriation of images. I hope that someone's image is not used to create an AI video of someone applying for a new credit card or voice or something. I just don't think the internet is a safe environment for private, public, for private information about individuals. You're all exposed on that as well, and it's just something I had a concern about. That's why I brought this forward. It doesn't sound like there's certainly much public support for it, and I'm not sure we have the board's support for it. So again, I'm just expressing my personal view.
Municipalities are encouraged to consult their attorney before implementing any policy. Was Ms. Camp consulted before?
I did not consult Ms. Camp.
I did.
Chris?
Who wrote the resolution?
I did not write it.
I wrote it, so I took Chris to...
I asked Chris to prepare a resolution.
If you decide to delete all these videos, West Ocean Police Department has an official YouTube channel. Would this same resolution apply to the West Ocean Police Department videos posted over three months ago?
This is specific to the Board of Supervisors, this resolution? So yes, no, I don't believe it does.
So it's arbitrary who, what departments in the township it would apply to?
It's not arbitrary, it's specific.
Okay. December 11th, 2024, the township's Instagram page said, quote, "Knowing what's going on in West Ocean is a game changer. Without these videos, a lot of people may not know." They could go to meeting minutes, but I, I think more people probably use YouTube than read meeting minutes on government websites. Let's see. I believe the PA records retention policy is that even though there are time limits for how long you need to keep things, I know once a year, a resolution comes before the board. If it's five years or seven years for police incident reports or credit card statements or what have you, even though there's a set schedule, it still has to come up and it must be passed by resolution. So I'm glad three months seems like it's off the table, but this is just a reminder, if you decide to delete them after a certain period of time, that means, I don't think it's a blanket, you give the township manager authority to delete them, he would still need to...
So I just want to check something with Chris. So I don't believe this is an official record of the township, so it may not be subject to some of the retention criteria. This is a media, we've talked about it, it's kind of a not considered official record.
I think it can be, well, it depends on which law you're looking at. So under the right-to-know law, I think it could be a public record. But I don't, it's not something in the municipal, the law you just said, as far as the retention policy, it's not specifically called out for a specific schedule. And what's...
But if the record is next to this, I mean, like, for example, in West Town or West Whiteland, you can't see it after six, 12 months, they're gone, so...
Yeah, I don't think, they don't have a resolution every six months to say, okay, you can go destroy the last six months. This resolution was intended to be a policy set in place that after a certain number of days from that meeting date, the manager had the authority to...
Delete it.
Remove that.
Okay.
Okay, and then also, there are other videos on West Ocean's YouTube page, Hamlet, Crest Park, Pollination in Progress, Arbor Day 2024, Winter Storm Prep. So if you delete videos, I believe those videos need to be deleted as well. That's not what, this, just so you're clear, this resolution was only to address...
I believe Margie's point is, if I'm concerned about things being on the internet, in YouTube then, you really consider the whole gamut, right?
Right, right. And just on like a personal level? I've cried up here, my voice shakes, I go blank, I stutter, I stammer, I sometimes am nonsensical. Personally, I could say, get rid of them. I'm not, but I know that it's too important. There are things you do because it's right, and it's right for your neighbors and it's right for the citizens, and god damn it, it's just the right thing to do. And I don't understand, this is just the wrong thing to do, and I just can't believe we're even here talking about it. So I hope you just, just delete this idea from your brains and move on.
Anyone else?
I do have one other question for you, Mr. Walsh. I hear you both in the budgeting process and now, that you thought of this resolution on your own, and these are your personal views, and you are not here in your capacity to get your personal view, you're here in the capacity of representing your township residents. What is your view representing the residents that just talked?
Well, obviously, I've said as at the beginning, I've changed my view on some of these things. Again, I stand by, I have a right to bring to the board an idea that I think is a problem and see if the board has any support for it, and that's why we're here discussing it. We've had a good discussion on it, so... Any other questions? All right, so let's just test where we are with the board then.
We have to make two more here.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Eric Took, West Ocean Township. Just quickly, I see no particular reason not to maintain existing records since there's no cost. Number two, maximum transparency would engender trusted institution. If there's nothing to hide or attempt to obfuscate, then why remove? At a bare minimum, I think two years for a year-over-year comparison, if we're talking budgeting or other things, discussion about paving, whatever, at least at a minimum, two years. The details and demeanor of the board and interactions should be public, both good and not so good. It can be a deterrent to embarrassing or disrespectful behavior of public board.
Thank you. Police, welcome back. Oh, sorry to say that.
Police, fine. I just want to say transparency is so important to help that people have trust in their elected leaders on both sides of the aisle. We all have suspicions about our elected leaders from local to national. And to do anything to take away any transparency is going to lead to distrust. I guess, to Eric's point, if there's no cost, what's the harm? What's the harm in keeping those videos on YouTube?
Thank you. Well, thank you, everybody. Did you raise a hand or you didn't? Thank you, everybody, for a robust and respectful conversation. I certainly appreciate that. I, like I said, I've changed my own mind about this, so at this point, I'm just gonna test the mood of the board to see if anyone is interested in, let's do it in two stages. First, is anyone interested in making a motion to approve resolution as written, number 132025? Is there anybody on the board interested in approving the resolution but with a modified retention period? I'm looking at the wrong one.
No, I'm not interested.
So we've had no, no one on the board is willing to entertain a motion to remove the township videos this evening, so we'll move on to another agenda item. So you want to make a comment?
So real quickly...
Would you like to state your name, please?
I'm sorry, Sam Freeman, West Ocean. That ordinance, is that what was written, the entire level of the ordinance?
It's a resolution, it's not an ordinance, it's a resolution. But as it was posted on the meeting materials, yes.
Okay, so that was the extent?
That was the extent of it, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on then to... Are we done with this yet, Doug?
He always gives nice comments, okay.
I know he does.
He's always polite.
The meeting minutes, videos, they're sort of special. Sometimes we all follow YouTube channels, like I like to watch them when they're making videos when they fly in their airplanes and stuff, that's real interesting. I follow Israel a lot, there's some great guys from Israel, and sometimes things get taken down without their, YouTube takes it down, or when the guy's flying the airplane, he kind of screws up and he doesn't want to get his license revoked, but that's different. This is special and their memories, so I'm glad you made that decision. Thank you very much.
All right, let's move on to agenda item number 10, which is discussion on possible approval of the 2025 Arbor Day proclamation by the board. So I'm gonna ask if there's any of our board liaisons to the SAC would like to bring this to the board in the meetings. Ashley or Tina?
Point for this evening is West Ocean. Okay, I'll start over. Fourth of board this evening is West Ocean Township 2025 Arbor Day Proclamation. The township has recognized Arbor Day annually through a proclamation adopted by the board. Additionally, the township has been recognized by Tree City, USA Program, Arbor Day Foundation, and this is a component of that program, thanks to Ashley, who did the application every year. Each year, the SAC holds an Arbor Day event. This year's Arbor Day event will be held Saturday, May 3rd, and will consist of Maintenance Day of the plantings completed at Hammersmith Crest Park in the past. I agree the actual proclamation, did I read the proclamation?
It's up to you.
Okay, we usually, we usually do it at the Arbor Day.
It's up to you.
Yeah. Yeah. The last Friday in April is designated Arbor Day, which will be observed by widespread planting of trees and shrubs by a group of communities stressing the value and importance of trees and forests. The importance of trees and why they're so important is trees filter pollution runoff, help minimize flooding, clean streams, improve air quality, reduce energy costs, produce life-giving oxygen, sequester carbon, and provide habitat for wildlife. That's it.
Thank you, Tina. So we need to approve this Arbor Day proclamation. Is a board member willing to make the motion to approve it?
I'll make the motion.
Make your names for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tina. Is there any public comment or questions about our Arbor Day proclamation? Charlie?
Whatever happened to Barker Park? I think we're a couple hundred trees short.
That was what...
That's what the Stroud Reserve, they're supposed to be doing the planting sometime this year. That was the timeline that was in place.
Okay, so later this year. Any other questions? All right, let's take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes, we're by zero. Next is agenda item number 11, which is a public hearing on possible adoption of an ordinance number two, 2025, amending Chapter 78 of Vehicles and Traffic of the West Ocean Township Code of Ordinance. Krista, would you mind bringing this one?
Sure. So this is something that Brian periodically brings to my attention after he deals with the police department and new roads that have come in or developments that require changes to the vehicle code. Chapter 78 is your chapter of the West Ocean Code called Vehicles and Traffic, and there's a specific section, 78-15, which identifies where there are certain terms that are prohibited at intersections. So we're just bringing up to date those intersections. There are four new intersections where there are specific prohibited terms. So because this is an ordinance as part of your Chapter 78, we had to advertise tonight's hearing in the Daily Local on March 24th, 2025, and we also, I sent a copy of the ordinance for public inspection to the Law Library and the Daily Local. So you had originally talked about this, changing a speed limit on some roads off the underdrugs, and that was taken out. That was not what was advertised, so this is specifically just for intersections where terms are going to be prohibited.
Thank you, Kristin. So as you say, this has been before the board a couple of times, and the last time, we removed the speed limit changes that had been initially proposed. Any board questions on the ordinance number two, 2025?
This is really just, you know, most of these are already in place already, like the wild, wild class, and like, and palely like, so it's just...
Yeah, they have to be by ordinance for the police to be able to enforce them, so we are catching up, correct?
Okay, I will make a motion to approve ordinance number two, 2025, amending Chapter 78 of the West Ocean Township Code. Is there a second? Thank you, John. Is there any public comment or questions on this? Is there any public comment or questions on this? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes by zero. Agenda item number thirteen, sorry, number twelve, is public hearing on possible adoption of ordinance number three, twenty twenty five, amending the compensation rates for members of the West Ocean Township Board of Supervisors pursuant to Act ninety four of twenty twenty four. Krista?
Sure. So, at your March eighteenth meeting, this was discussed, and Chris brought it to your attention that legislature passed Act ninety four of twenty twenty four to update the maximum compensation that a board supervisor of a second-class township is permitted to receive, I should say is the right word. So, there was nothing anywhere in your West Ocean Code. So, there isn't really a chapter of your West Ocean Code where this applies. And the board had decided at the meeting on March eighteenth that you wanted to take the advantage of what Act ninety four permits. And so, that, because it's based on your population. So, the population, based on the twenty twenty four census, is somewhere in the eighteen thousand number, right?
Twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three thousand. So, that allows the compensation to be six thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars per year. So, what the ordinance does is it states that, that you, the board, can be compensated in the maximum amount permitted by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania legislators, whatever they determine. So, if Act ninety four in the future is amended again and that number is increased, then the board is authorized to be paid that increase in what the state allows. But this specifically calls out that currently now, as of the date of the adoption of this ordinance, with the population being between fifteen thousand and twenty-four thousand nine ninety-nine, the maximum is six thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
Thank you, Krista.
And again, because it's an ordinance, this does have to be adopted, the Act ninety four does say that it has to be adopted through an ordinance process. And so, again, we had to advertise. So, we do a, we follow the state law on how advertisements are done. And it was done in the Daily Local News on March twenty fourth. And because we only do a summary of the ordinance, we have to send a full copy of the ordinance for public inspection to the Law Library and the Daily Local. And again, those procedures are spelled out in the second-class township code.
Thank you, Krista. I have one question. So, section one, does it apply both if act, you know, the compensation is adjusted again so a future date by the state legislature, or if the township population was to exceed twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine? Does it cover both circumstances? Or is it only for the...
It's both, because basically, I think it's both. Let me just read the way I wrote it. Maximum amount permitted by applicable laws of the Commonwealth. So, if maximum amount today, if the population were to increase, then the maximum amount would increase by nature of what the statute says.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
Sean, it should also be noted that this is only for newly elected board members going forward. This does not apply to us.
Correct.
Unless you're reelected, yeah. That's a separate law that says that the compensation of any board, whether it's municipal authorities or any other boards that could pay zoning hearing boards, it cannot be, and that same thing to your auditor, if your auditor's paid, any new salary can only be applied to a new term, a new term of office. So, that's a good point, Abe.
Yeah, the ordinance, you say that.
No, I don't think the ordinance needs to say that, because that's what the law is, regardless. And, yeah, it's not the second-class township that applies across, it's all, it's all.
So, finally, we're not loading ourselves a race. We would have to wait till everybody leaves before we do that.
I was going to ask, and I wasn't going to even fight that. I wouldn't want to be up there. I was, I was going to take the raise. What was it raised from?
Four thousand...
Six hundred, I think.
Four thousand per year.
And a meanest of all, no disrespect, what is, what was your compensation for being up there taking all the crap from us?
Four thousand.
Four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Is there any other benefits?
Yeah, you're eligible for healthcare benefits on the township.
You got free lunch or something like that?
No, we cut out all free lunches.
We stopped them all.
We eliminated all free lunches.
So, you weren't here at the last meeting, but we did discuss, the last time the legislature changed this was in nineteen ninety-five, so thirty years ago. And this has not even kept up with inflation.
I wasn't complaining. I was probably loading yourself a race. I really wasn't. I kind of know.
Okay, is there any one willing to make a motion to approve ordinance number three, twenty twenty five?
I'll second.
Okay, so this is then acting pursuant to Act ninety four, the compensation of board supervisors. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Is there any public comment or questions? All right, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Okay, thank you, Ashley.
Thirteen.
Okay, so the motion passed four-zero with Ashley abstaining. Agenda item thirteen is discussion on possible approval of proposal from Fuel Systems Services LLC for software upgrade to the Fuel Islands. Chris?
I'm the chairman for the board this evening. Our proposals from Fuel Systems Services LLC for upgrading the software on the township's Fuel Islands, these are at the municipal complex. The current software utilizes, is out of date and going to be unsupported. So, the two options that were provided were upgrade the current software, which would require both the software upgrade and one year of support at a cost of eight thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars. And then this option will no longer be supported after the current version. Option two, move the software to a hosted platform, which would involve both the setup and monthly costs. The cost for the option is three thousand dollars for the setup and then a hundred and seventy-nine dollar per month. Extending this through the remainder of twenty twenty five, the cost would be four thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and then two thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars per year. We had Josh Cook from Health Now and Michael Kakovar, Facility Superintendent, review these options. And based on the options available, it's our recommendation that the township pursue for the option number two, and we're basing this on the following. The onsite version will no longer be supported in the future. There are cost savings in the initial setup as outlined, and we analyzed the differences and determined that it would take about thirty and a half months on the hosted platform to equal the cost of the onsite version. We provided a spreadsheet kind of showing the extrapolation of those costs.
Thank you, Chris. Does the board have any questions on this particular topic?
Yeah, Chris, can you tell us, what does this software do? It allows it necessary?
It monitors our, it monitors our fuel system and allows it to activate. It tracks how often we're using fuel. It uses our FOB system to be able to, you know, open and, like, activate the system to be able to use it. Anyone assigned a township vehicle has a specific FOB that's assigned to them to utilize?
Okay, I guess I have a lot of questions regarding the software. As far as the record retention that it has, the retention records in Pennsylvania, which is section two forty-five, point four thirty-five, recording and record-keeping. The software that it has or the new software version, as far as record-keeping, the only thing out of the twenty-two things required for record-keeping, none of them, the system does, nor is it required to do. The only thing that it really does is that release detection is part of the software. So, the twenty-two, that's the only one that you really need, and that can be retained by printing it out, which most companies do print out. So, you don't, I'm not sure why we need the upgraded software, because it has nothing to do with the TLS three fifty, which is monitoring your tanks and your pipes.
Because the software we're using is out of date and unsupported any longer. We can't get service on it.
As far as what comes...
Like, if there's any technical issues or any problems, it's not supported with any upgrades, any patches, any security, anything like that.
Yeah, but I guess I'm not understanding, it's a TLS three fifty, so it's monitoring the tanks and your pipe. There's no other, no what other software needs to be upgraded for, so I guess I'm...
This isn't for monitoring the tanks and that. This is for when any employee gets fuel for a township vehicle, it knows exactly which vehicle it's going to, so it codes it to which account is charged. So, when the fuel's delivered, the delivers you're paid by which accounts are using it, and also it turns on and unlocks the pumps.
Okay, so it's more like a POS system.
Yeah, it's the POS system for the employees to, and then police and everybody who uses it to fill their cars. The pumps don't work.
And as I said, as I said earlier, each employee in each township vehicle has its own special FOB. And then when we go up to refuel, it activates the system when we put the FOB on there. We have our mileage, and as Brian said, he's corrected, then monitors which vehicle it goes to.
Okay, I didn't get that.
And it activates, and it activates the pumps and everything.
And that system that you're using is...
Is outdated.
But it can't be...
And not supported.
Okay.
And going to an onsite version, which we currently have, will no longer be supported after the most, after this current version. So, you'd be paying eight thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars for a version that's going to be obsolete in a short period of time.
Okay.
Yeah, this isn't the monitoring system for the tanks. That's a completely separate...
Yeah, I know, that's what I was questioning. Okay.
You have any questions?
No.
Other questions for the board? So, I had one question. I think Mike answered it in an email, which was the proposed software hosting in the cloud fee, monthly hosting fee is, he believes or was told by the supplier, that it is fixed for a five-year term. So, I would want to make sure that the contract specifically stated that it's a fixed hosting fee per month and it's not subject to change.
We can get that upgraded.
Yeah.
Arbor Day, excuse me.
Yeah, again, this is for option two. Any other questions for the board? Okay, so we have a recommendation for option two. Is there a board member willing to make a motion to approve option two from Fuel Systems Services for upgrading the software for the township's Fuel Islands?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Nate. Is there a second? I'll second. Any public comment or questions? Sal?
Just a question, Tim. How old's the system person?
I don't know, but it's, but I can tell you that the display board is barely readable.
Okay, so that's a hard thing, that software thing. So, the software works?
Yeah, it's still working today.
But it's not supported.
So, it doesn't work, there's a police emergency, they can't fuel the vehicle, we can come to you for some fuel.
Well, it's upset, it's a matter of...
So, there's a reason, but you have to have it in service.
No, I get that. I'm just saying, if it's something that's, you know, we, you know, go to DOS five-point O, you know, if it works, it works. Does it ever not work, I guess is the question?
Well, there's always a risk that it could not work, right?
Exactly.
Well, hardware-wise, I get it. Software-wise, I don't get it.
Well, the stick always has software glitch or something.
You always have software glitch, there's no patches that support it.
This isn't Microsoft Excel, like, put it on my machine or do I use the cloud service? It's not quite the same thing.
You know, to be disrespectful, hey, look, I mean, my computer at home's running Windows seven oh, and I'm not, never letting it upgrade because it works. I think that's crashed, so, but I understand, just checking to see that there is...
Fair enough. There's a risk associated with it. Any other questions? Margie?
Is the usage actually audited? Would you look at who's getting the gas and how often and...
I never had, but I suppose you could. But again, it's all activated by, it's all activated by FOBs, which are assigned to specific employees.
Sure, and I'm only asking, I'm certainly not accusing anybody of anything, but you oftentimes read where there's theft from Fuel Islands, from government agencies.
I've had to deal with that before.
Yeah, so I might ask that, you know, maybe an internal audit just happened randomly or is that sometimes...
Is that, although the audit, this would not be part of...
Well, really, no. Because it's not a, it's technically a financial transaction.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, just to be clear, when I said I've had to deal with that before, not you.
Right, right, oh, that's...
Is there a camera somewhere located?
Yes.
I just want to say, somebody drives their own personal vehicle up to the pump and puts their FOB in there. There's a camera right there, so it would be a smart move.
Does the software offer alarms for, like, spikes in usage? You know, hey, I'm running, 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 here's five, ten months, and all of a sudden there's a big...
Not that I'm...
That'd be really interesting.
Probably not the current version, but maybe...
Well, I'll tell you when I get that, yeah. Deadlands, you know, dead...
That's a good question, Margie. I mean, there are checks and balances, there is a camera on it.
There's actually three, there's three cameras, two or three.
But, like you said, Chris, it does happen. Okay, so duly noted, we'll see if Chris has any further thought on that in due time. Any other questions? Yes, all right.
Does it really do with the contract so much as if there was a deep problem, I assume this is going to be probably a web-based thing? So, if there's, if there's corruption to it or, you know, a hacker or something like that, does this contract, do they maintain all that, or is this just their one-time upgrade?
As far as I know, they maintain all that. We're paying them to host everything.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion, a second?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. All right, you take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes by zero. Agenda item number fourteen is discussion on possible approval of a professional services proposal from Carroll Engineering Corporation for the Montgomery Avenue Storm Sewer Pedestrian Improvement Project. Chris?
I'm the chairman. Before the board this evening is proposal from Carroll Engineering Corporations to provide professional services for the Montgomery Avenue Storm Sewer Pedestrian Improvement Project. The township submitted a multimodal transportation fund grant application to D C E D in July of twenty twenty four for this project, and it was announced in February this year that the township was awarded seven hundred thousand dollars in funding through the MTF program. There was a corresponding application to PENDOT that was also submitted, however, awards have not been announced at this time. So, proposal was submitted by Carroll Engineering for their professional services, and the proposal amount is for a not to exceed price of one hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. I reviewed the grant application for one that was submitted, and the price outlined in the proposal, I would say, is comparable to the amount included in the grant application at the time of the application. The estimate was one hundred and ten thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. The proposal includes completing the permitting with PENDOT and D E P for the project. It was previously discussed that a HECS study with FEMA might be necessary. However, as noted in the memo and is in the proposal, they do, Carroll Engineering does not believe that that's required at that time, but if it is required, we'll address that accordingly and bring a modification before the board if necessary. Chris is basing this on similarities to this project and one completed on Ballmar Street in twenty twenty-three, and he advised that a general permit was obtained for the project and a HECS study was not required. And this project is included in the twenty twenty-five budget in the Capital Reserve Fund.
What was it included at? Included the grand amount or just the difference?
We included the full, we included the full project value with, and I don't believe I put in any revenue from the corresponding grant. We just went forward with, like, we were going to do a project at just under one point one million dollars.
So, to the conversation earlier, we're going to have a healthier balance in the Capital Reserve Fund, although mostly, we would not be probably spending the whole amount this year anyway. You budgeted, did you budget the full amount or two years?
I'll, we budgeted the full amount for this year, however, I'll defer to Brian, but I think the permitting process could take probably eight to twelve months.
At least, if not a year ahead, depending on the D E P.
Okay, in the past, when we've had a project of this magnitude and then expensed by our professional engineer of over a hundred thousand, we've had a board conversation around, is it worth, considering what this price is, fair price for the work? I actually think this is a very good price if you're looking at a million-dollar project, which is what this is, I believe, roughly. Brian, is that about...
It was just under one point one million.
Just under one point one. They have the planning, design, permitting, surveying, bidding, and construction oversight. About twelve percent of the cost is really good. I'm thinking that because of their experience of the design on Ballmar Street, this probably informed a lot of their ability to manage this project really well, so I'm very supportive of Carroll.
I'll just wait to grant the...
Yeah, exactly.
And the grant two fifty?
No, it was...
That we didn't hear from them?
We haven't heard from them yet. I want to say it was like seven hundred thousand.
Oh, really? So, that was between the two grants that were coming?
If you, if you are successful in securing, the township is successful in securing the second grant, it will probably cover the entire project. Because I think, I think that had a match of like three hundred to fifty-two thousand.
Do you have any idea what the award would be for the second grant?
Your guess is as good as mine. Your guess is as good as mine.
Is there any matching weight on this for either one of these grants?
This one, if the board recalls, we did a second resolution because there was a waiver provision from the match requirement that we weren't aware of when it was originally submitted. We did submit with the full amount to DCED, but when they did the award, it was based on the original application. So 700,000.
Thanks, Chris. I know I ask this question every time, but Kristin's here to confirm it. So the terms and conditions in the Carroll proposal are adjusted for our comments from previous projects that they've done. Okay. Does the board have any other questions about the proposed scope of work for Carroll?
I'm just curious, that Brian Medium might know this, are there any easements that are going to be required in this budget?
They don't believe so, but until they get a full design, we don't know. At this point, they think they can do the project.
And this budget doesn't include any upstream restoration or anything like that, it's just for the culvert work?
I think we, I think we will need something from the sewer authority, correct? Something for the little pump station on their, on Montgomery Avenue.
An easement, would that be an easement?
No, the force needs on there. It's not the, it's not the.
How is this?
The reason we have to go with the smaller boxes is because of the location of the floor. We can't put a full box in there.
Under number seven, it does say up to two temporary construction easements are required.
Yeah, that, he thinks that, he thinks he can get away with none, but he put two in there just to have a place on there.
Okay.
I did have, I did have Brian review this as well.
What about the pedestrian improvement project? No easement on that side of the road?
No, because of, because of the red, the red wave, it'll stay, it'll still be the red wave. It's on the same side as the, the pedestrian side will be the same side as the highway. The opposite.
And is there any consideration of coordination with the borough?
Boroughs that were fully aware and supportive of the project.
I spoke with Sean Mancher, and we're aware of the money, and we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a meeting with them to discuss it.
If they're involved in planning and supportive of the grant application.
Will they continue it through the borough of the Boo Street?
That's up to them.
There's no, has, there been any discussion?
No.
They had that discussion with them.
They had that discussion.
My one question related to, when we first talked about applying for this grant, we talked about the ongoing hassle of advocating PENDOT to come and clear out the existing culvert. So obviously, we have a design that hopefully will be less prone to blocking, but we did talk about having an agreement with PENDOT for the township to be able to maintain the flow.
And if I'm remembering the discussion correctly, Mark was comfortable with maintaining it. He just wasn't comfortable with the current condition of life and everything that's under ground right now.
But just, the reason my question is, is that doesn't involve Carroll Engineering, that would be between the township and PENDOT, it would not involve the scope of work at all right?
Most likely will be a condition of property.
Right, they're gonna wanna pass that on.
They're gonna, they're gonna put it as a condition of property to maintain.
Anyway, and I didn't, I know he's not here, I know he left earlier, but I did send Mark this proposal, the full grant application, so there's all the information related to the project that's currently contemplated.
Very good. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I mean, I'm really excited, because this is a high priority on land, personally. I can't tell you how many times I've gone, but they said their area was just a slight storm, and then there's a flood over there, and it's a main access there to the hospital, and a good fellow's ambulance is right up the road from there. So I mean, this is a long time coming, I'd like to see, we're finally moving on this.
Very good. I will make a motion to approve the professional services proposal from Carroll Engineering Corporation for this project in the amount of, let me read it out so we get it right, $115,950. Thank you for the second. Is there public comment or questions about the project, Margie?
Couple of questions. When the invoice comes into Carroll for this, is it paid out of the general plan or the capital plan?
Paid out of the Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay, and then when the state or whoever gave us the grant reimburses us for whatever, where is that money deposited?
Goes to the Capital Reserve Fund.
Great, it does.
All our grants are budgeted in the Capital Reserve Fund.
For our expenditures and, okay, great, thank you.
Answer the questions. Okay, ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes by a zero. Agenda item number 15 is discussion on possible appointment of Steve Crum as a regular, as a regular voting member of the West Ocean Township Planning Commission. And this is with the board, so I'll introduce it. So before the board this evening is consideration to appoint Steve Crum as a regular voting member of the West Ocean Township Planning Commission. A vacancy of a regular voting member on the planning commission was recently created with the resignation of Vito Genua. Mr. Crum currently serves as an alternate member to the planning commission and was appointed to this position on October the 17th, 2023. If appointed, Mr. Crum would complete a term that expires in January 2028.